Good evening, welcome to the study session of September 10th. Donna, will you do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Blech.
Here.
Councilmember Sterns.
Here.
Councilmember Gilmore.
Here.
Mary Nesko.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Sack.
Here.
And Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Tonight, Finance Director Mike Isins and City Manager Martin Ziegler has information for us about our 2025 budget.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. We're coming back to you before you hear about the capital improvement plan to just review a couple of points from our study session two weeks ago about the general fund budget. I think there was a little bit of confusion, so we want to give you some firm numbers and get your agreement on how we proceed to put the budget together on the general fund side of things for 2025. So I'm going to bring up the document on screen for you and anybody in the audience that's looking. So I'll start things out, and I know Mark likely will add some things. What we've tried to do here is summarize what we're proposing in a little bit more clear way and answering some of the requests, if you will, that you all made and for some clarification. So for the 2025 general fund budget, to be clear, it maintains the 2024 baseline, so all positions that we currently have in the budget this year and all ongoing costs. We took out one-time costs that might have been in there for this year that were maybe related to a grant or something like that. All of those are in there, all current positions. It does include, you had mentioned an additional police officer. We reviewed our FTE. There is an unfilled position in the budget that we've held that they can fill for next year, so it doesn't require adding an additional position. And so Mark and Chief Costad will work on that as is needed in the future, but I wanted to bring that up. It has an additional 1.0 FTE for facilities, and that's a custodial position. We did include all priority one requests from departments in this presentation to you tonight, and I'll talk about that just a little bit. And it includes one year of fleet management through enterprise. So to kind of take you down where we're at, our projected revenue right now hasn't changed. It's at $15,057,159. Our projected expenses, including everything I have up there except the priority one requests. I'll cover how we're going about that a little farther down. We have the difference then of $449,051, and then we also have a transfer of $400,000 to the street fund. So that difference, if you will, is just over $849,000. In other words, where revenue would exceed expenses. So what we're proposing is to cover that with fund balance. We have, we're projecting just a little bit over $6 million fund balance, and I'll show that on a next slide. And then the over baseline request, that priority one request, and I think this is where there might have been some confusion last time. That was not included in there last time. We've included it here to fund that also with ending fund balance, so it's included in that. We have a priority two list we're not recommending that we include right now and some other staffing requests. A lot of items on that priority one list are things that we'll have to do no matter what. There's some increase to the animal shelter, for example, and some other kinds of things that are going up. Software costs that we're obligated to no matter what. So when we say priority one request, some of them are almost must-dos. I think that's a fair way to characterize.
So we're clear, there was two priority one forms last week. One was, I believe, was your request, and the other was staff request.
Essentially.
So which ones are we talking about today?
We're talking about the staff.
Okay. Perfect.
Yeah. So now, this is the second list that we saw last week. That was a breakdown per line item of requests that would continue operations or add services in 2025. As I mentioned, it's computer replacement, animal shelter costs. Let's see, software licenses. We have professional services in human resources. We have the additional cost for an election at the TBD ballot measure score. That's things I may learn in another summer. And the list with priority one, two, three, and the staff request. Remember back to that.
Okay.
So I'm going to move on to summarize a couple of more things. As you recall, we have this list of some efficiency and strategic kinds of projects that we're recommending. We're going to talk about using some of our real estate excise tax funds for that. But for this purpose, I just wanted to take you down one more time. So we have a, we're estimating right now that we'll have an ending fund balance of just over $6,300,000. That's an estimate, but we're pretty, as sure as we can be in September that it's going to be there. I can't imagine that it would fall much at this point, so I feel pretty confident in that. I'm backing out the reserve 20% that is per council policy, so that's 20% of this year's expenses. That's three, just over $3,113,000. That leaves us an unreserved general fund balance of $2.8 million. So if we take out the opioid settlement dollars, because we need to make sure that that's kept in there to work with in the future, and then we use this ending fund balance to look at funding the 2025 expenses that I've outlined. So that includes all of those things, the differences in the expenses exceeding revenue, the transfer to the street fund, our priority one requests, and then additionally setting aside $500,000 for the future of vehicle funding. So that's really kind of planning for the future, that we don't want to start this, as City Manager Ziegler mentioned, we don't want to start commitment with enterprise and then in two or three years say, now what? We don't have anywhere to go to. You know, we're going to try to fund it out of an line item in the general fund, but we can't necessarily see the future. So that total is just over 1.84.
And like back to the enterprise, the future amount, we realize that in three years or so, and we have the flexibility within our operating budget. That 500,000 dollars certainly can be allocated by council to areas that are at need at that point. That's our intent, but it's kind of that savings account, if you will, to make sure that we have the ability to maintain a proper operating fleet for our white fleet, which is operations and our police cars and stuff.
So that, we're looking for, I guess, as we say, a nod from you if you're comfortable using the ending fund balance. I guess from, as your finance director, I'll just tell you what, there's a couple of things I want to make sure you hear, and that is, you know, we have a pretty healthy reserve. I don't think it would serve us well to make cuts and then sit on that money. We're also in a place where we're hoping to see some growth. We know that some development's happening. I can't, again, predict if it will be enough in one, two, or three years, but I think it would be short-sighted to make cuts now with that happening and sit on that large of an ending fund balance. But understand, we don't know for sure, so we may be sitting here in a year or a little less than that, having to face some reality. If for some reason the development doesn't happen at this speed, we're hoping it does, and I certainly hope it does. But assuming it does, and we have some of the fees that come in, and then once the houses are built, there's some additional revenue. But understand, our expenses are exceeding at a pretty good clip above what our revenue does. So I want to make sure you understand that next year, we'll have a balance of $800,000 in the general fund, but that's probably not going to, in and of itself, be enough to fund all of these things. So that's why we're talking about looking at that TBD renewal and some other things. But I think, like I said, I'm not comfortable making recommendations to the city manager and then ultimately you to make cuts when we're sitting on that much of an ending fund balance, but at the same time, this is a pretty careful walk we're going to have to do, and we're still going to have to really watch things. You'll notice we're not increasing physicians much. I mean, we're adding a custodian, but we'll also have potentially some turnover this year in staffing that we'll have to look very carefully at how we continue.
And this is a custodian position as well, maybe in '23, so it's actually going from one custodian to two currently, which we have two in 2023. And it's a bird on existing staff, and we're certainly seeing the level of service declining below what our expectations are for our staff and for public in cleanliness. So I want to make sure that we are maintaining a safe and clean environment as well as public local infrastructure. That we'll maintain what we are building, so it's less of an investment when going in to repair some infrastructure to the state.
Yeah. In a perfect world, we should be using all of our ending fund balance other than our reserve to operate our city. Granted, things of the last several years haven't been, you know, very predictable, so I understand why we don't want to spend it all. But in a perfect world, we should spend all that money for cities.
Or allocate it for future projects and kind of savings, if you will, kind of like the enterprise fund. Absolutely. Let's hit your market for operations and critical to our community.
So I mean, I'm comfortable with moving forward with the recommendations, you know, and we're also going to have our $3 million left over. So we're going to have $4 million really in the coffers beginning of the year, and then, well, hopefully more, because, you know, we always do a little better.
We can't, I mean, remember that reserve 20% is for emergency, some sort of downturn in the economy. We have to access that through your action. It also helps us not have to borrow to keep expenses flowing, because our revenue isn't always even. So that money is an important kind of base for us to operate in the lower months before, in particular, property taxes come in, which is just twice a year.
I'd like, if we can, also, you know, I've been pushing porta-potties for years. I'd like to also budget for some porta-potties downtown, maybe a city, three city porta-potties located around town somewhere eventually. We can decide that later, but, you know, that's 300 bucks a month, so what's that, 3,500 bucks a year?
We did include some homeless response in those priority one for supplies, just $6,000.
Yeah. As you saw previously, we wanted to allocate for established homeless response line, actually better track some of the services that we're providing within the community and give the council more data and give us really something to base future requests off of. Right now, we do have one porta-potty located in the apartment next door. That's currently being allocated to our facilities budget, my own, because it's out of the general fund. We can pull that and track that pretty easily, but what we'll do is we'll put it back towards that homeless response line item. So again, it's dedicated to that place.
And how much is that?
Ooh, I think it's right at $100,000.
No, no, how much is the homeless response fund?
Oh, we were requesting $6,000 request there.
Okay.
So I'm optimistic that the permits are going to come and the houses are going to be built, and that that is really not likely, because I'm a worst-case scenario planner. So for me to say that, I'm feeling pretty confident. Do I think they're all going to come right away? No, but I do feel pretty positive about that. I do feel comfortable that we have that reserve, and I know we don't touch it until there's an emergency, but we do have that. We didn't always have that. So I do feel good about this, and I'm good with it where we're at.
If we cannot cut services, we will get our needs. That means a lot.
Right.
I like that, you know, we'll consider how you have it without even having to touch our reserve. So I'm definitely comfortable with that.
I have a quick question, I guess. So for the general fund revenue for 2015, is that basically just rolling forward our 2024 year-end estimate? Or what are we expecting to have in revenue for 2024?
Like increases specifically?
Or just the total number?
So that amount I have on the first page, just over $15 million is the estimate of what our revenue will increase in 2025. So it's, you know, there aren't many increases we can, assuming the property tax is 1%. I'm estimating up, and I'm hopeful it's more, but conservatively, that BNO tax comes in about $200,000 more than this year. Those really are largest increases. You know, there may be some grants that I don't know about right now. Certainly, we're really hardworking in the city shell to get grants. The court has some that come into the general fund, but it's pretty much the rest of it's taxes.
And sales tax, we, frankly, yeah, we're really conservative, because you just don't know where it's going to go. And then, as through the pandemic, it proved to us that essentially it stayed flat, other than frankly, the construction industry boozed through that time, but that has now led us back out to pre-pandemic levels.
And if we get that building, there may be a little bit of an increase, but it's really, really difficult to predict that. You know, we'll get some well constructions happening, but then it'll fall probably back down to low.
Well, we'd like to just consider that one-time funding, so that's dedicated to projects rather than ongoing costs, if we do have those, much like the permit revenue. Unless we really see, you know, subdivision in the process every year, and you can hang your hat, if you will, on some of these new startup, new construction subdivisions coming year after year, great. At this point, yes, they're knocking on our door. We have 199-unit subdivision that has her grading permit. They should have their civil permits here in the near future. I think that bodes well. But we've also seen a subdivision back in the 2000s that got to that point and then didn't build for another seven or eight years. So we want to be conservative. We want to be able to approach this cautiously and not get a position where we're in 2023, we'll come back to council mid-year and say, we have the corrections made. Rather go the other way and say, come back to council mid-year and say, we've got some additional revenue. What project or program of service would you like to increase or add to our community?
And we're pretty confident that the insurance rates are where we want them to be.
Yeah. I'm taking a pretty conservative look at that. So I think what I've budgeted is probably a little higher than where it will come in in both our medical benefits for employees and our liability insurance. I hope on the liability insurance, I've been conservative enough this year. I missed the mark the last two, because it's come in so much.
Nobody can predict that.
In our last meeting, you gave us also some direction that you not only wanted to maintain staffing levels, but keep staff. You know, as much as I can share, we've budgeted for those increases. You know, we're in negotiations with a couple of our labor unions, so I think we've covered things for that in here pretty sufficiently also, but we've tried to follow your direction in that regard also. Last, two weeks ago, we talked about some, if you will, deferred maintenance projects, and then we come back to you with a proposal to use some of our REIT funds for that. So those are still on here to be done in, or included in the 2025 budget. Those items include the secure parking lot that would be for police and courts over here, the fire alarm, the duck cleaning at the library building, the library debt that's coming in over what the grant was, some preventive maintenance on our elevators, the HVAC replacement at both the museum, library, and then a new one at the animal shelter, and then our civic center doors. So that total is $723,000, since, you know, that's not coming from the ending fund balance. That's coming from our REIT funds that helped out a lot, I think, in our willingness, if you will, our, I guess, ability to use that ending fund balance for these other projects. Because this would have been, this would have drained it down to a place where now it's getting, you know, a little bit. These are things that need to be done. I don't think anybody would look at this list and say, gosh, that's frivolous. These are things that really need to happen. It's just a matter of how do we do all this within our tight budget.
If I recall correctly, there were a few things on the REIT one and two list that you weren't certain could come from those funds, like the maintenance issues, like the duck cleaning, those things. Do we have more clarity on that now, that we can do that from those funds?
Yes, we think so, and we also have about $40,000 in ARPA money that came through COVID that we need to use this year that can go towards some of this also. So where that maintenance item, that one may be attributed to that. And then the others are clearly REIT, where we're, you know, doing things that are for sure infrastructure, if you will, that are in our, that we plan for.
Yeah, so if it's extending the life or maintaining some infrastructure within a number of categories, including municipal buildings, streets, and parks, yeah.
Which really, the elevator maintenance does do that. It maintains it, it extends its life, but we need to spend the R amount.
Yeah. It's still a healthy balance for REIT one and REIT two, looks like, right? Am I reading that right? We're still going to have a healthy balance.
Yes, I did try to run a balance up there. So taking into account what we're estimating, I mean, I'm going off budget, so I don't know if all those things will happen this year, but I'm assuming they will. If they do, then that's, we're still sitting at. And I included in the 2025 budget, Public Works has $200,000, you'll notice, under REIT two for downtown street repairs, and so that's also accounted for in here. So yeah, I think, you know, and we're expecting that, you know, should the growth happen as it's projected, that would generate REIT money actually moving forward. So you're hearing the finance director being positive here, not just conservative, but assuming that all happens, that adds to REIT. So it doesn't happen maybe instantly, but it keeps that fund if those homes sell, adding some funds to it. And we've had a really fortunate couple of years of interest earnings that have also helped our individual funds. So that's been really great also, because that's been kind of a boon to these.
Is that still?
It is right now. Until the Fed lowers that rate, it'll hit the local government investment pool a little bit. If they do that next week, it won't hang it by any means, but it'll start to then bring that situation down a little bit, yes.
All right, and Lindsay, and Miguel, you're okay?
I'm comfortable with that.
You asked a question, but you're doing the same thing.
Yeah, I mean, I do have a little bit of a pause when we see a $450,000 ending fund balance after the year with $400,000 moving forward, or $450,000 moving forward of ongoing costs. Am I reading that correctly? I get that we're going to see some revenue growth. We're hoping to see a lot more revenue growth thanks to more building, but it's kind of a two-year cushion of ongoing costs, which we don't have a chance to adjust, but those ongoing costs are people.
And programs and services.
So they need to happen, and I'm here for it. I'm not trying to stand in the way of anything. It's just, I hope we see the growth, but it's a slight cause for concern.
It certainly is something that we're considering on a daily basis, and it just, I think this proposal, proposed budget doesn't come easy because of that. Again, I referenced 2023, because that's kind of still the old, if you will, that we all went through, we all experienced, and we don't want to experience that again. But we also, if we're going to continue to provide the services the community deserves, as well as hopefully encourage that growth and provide the service that we need to, to bring additional revenue by that growth, we need to have those staffing there turn out to be able to provide that, so.
26th TBD doesn't fly then as a whole new ballgame.
It's a whole new ballgame, yeah. We're queuing up a study session in probably November specifically about the TBD, where it's been over this, what, eight and a half, close to nine years? Where those, where the funds have been spent, what kind of projects have been in place, what the council's, I think, options may be moving forward, and any timelines that you may consider to have that back on the ballot for another 10-year term starting April 26th. So we want to start that early, in fact, this year, so going into 2025, we can plan accordingly.
It's definitely a difficult balance here, because we have that ending fund, we have the need, but we're funding ongoing expenses with one-time money. And that's the part where it's stepping out with a bit of a risk, because if we don't get more revenue through the growth, we'll be facing a much difficult, a much different and more difficult conversation in the year. But it's also hard to say, we'll make cuts now and sit on that ending fund, when that's the difficulty.
I'm satisfied that we're risking our fund balance on our people, and we're investing, that we're keeping everyone employed and ready to go into our next growth period, if there is one, but we're ready and available to be in that position. And I'm satisfied that we're gambling our future on our people, that we're, and the only thing that we're actually increasing in the budget is, you know, public safety 2%, right? So, I mean, I'm really satisfied with the cuts we've made. I'm tired of cutting, and I think we need to be in a position, to be in a position of growth, and I think that this gives us that one year or a couple of years to get there. And I think that's a good investment on our people and our staff and the hard work that everyone on the city staff does. So this is, I'm very comfortable with what we're doing, but I am, like everyone else, have anxiety about it. So, but I think this is the best play.
We'll continue providing monthly financial reports as we move through the rest of this year, next year, and ongoing, so council will be updated on that. Obviously, there's a little bit of a lag with that, because we have to close that month schedule on council meetings, but we'll do our best to keep you updated in briefings, and we're not, certainly, it's our responsibility. We're not afraid to lose our responsibility to make corrections if that's needed, and we see a trend in one direction, we will have to make that correction up front.
And we'll know early, so if something's not coming in like we anticipated, we can look at something so that it's not, I mean, severe.
What we, it's probably not even in here, what are we budgeting BNO for this, next year for?
I increased it by $200,000. And again, if that, my hope is it comes in even higher, so that for 2026, we can go up to then a more realistic level. But again, I, it's conservative budgeting really, if I overshoot the estimate, if we, then we're bringing it down, and that's in our tight budget, that would be really difficult to do. So I'd rather say, look, it came in higher, now we can safely take it up to a level we can get to in the future, which I certainly hope it is.
If there's extra room in that budget, make sure you get yourself a crystal ball.
Okay.
All right.
All right. I'm going to set this up for Public Works to go over the capital improvement plan.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. I'm bringing forward our capital improvement plan. This is highlighting some of the capital projects that we're going to be budgeting for in the next year. On the cover page, it's just kind of a highlight of a couple of the projects. Well, one is close to wrapping up. They're still doing some tweaks at the well itself. Well, one is close to wrapping up. They're still doing some tweaks at the well itself. And then we have a couple of buildings on order, so we don't have to haul chlorine from down at our shop up there in the back of a vehicle. And then safe routes to school. We are in the process of closing that project out and going to be bringing that soon for projects close out. So, well, number three, removal testing and potential replacement. This is a well housed off of Fallsview and Springs Road, their watershed. It's, uh, two thousand sixteen was the last time it was replaced. So we are going to inspect that. But we want to have the ability to, you run the risk of sometimes when you pull this infrastructure out and do some inspections that it's not going to work again. So we're budgeting so where we can, if need be, replace that home. And then well one, anyway, still want to work through it.
Yeah, if you end up not needing it all, what do you do with the extra?
So that will just rotate back into the water end of balance. And then well one, pretty familiar with that. We just did the gravity line upgrading project there. This is a nineteen eighty-nine well pump and motor. So we are going to replace that and upgrade it with a BFD. And we're going to, at that point, put in some connection points to where the new water line goes in to feed the Olympic Heights. We can tie into that. We're sizing the motor and BFD so we can use well one to fill the upper mount of the diesel tank. And.
Being the main source of water because we had it as.
Which is, that's what the water touches all the time. So this is a little more cosmetic.
In this scenario where we do replace, we do put that million gallon tank in that, that we need, we want, could we use like tanks like this for the reclaimed water somehow, some way down the road to move the water around? Because we don't really, can't move the reclaimed water too far right now, can we?
Yeah, it's only conveyed to Highway one oh two and now towards Correction Center at this point.
So I mean, so could something like this, I mean, granted, it's not earthquake proof and, you know, it survived a few earthquakes already, but couldn't be used.
The conveyance will be the biggest issue with purple pipe reclaimed water, just because lack infrastructure for conveyance with the ongoing reclaimed tank project. It will add more capacity on the, on the satellite plant site. It would be conveyance from there.
And then you need kind of the industrial user or a huge golf course or, you know, all the high school sports fields are going synthetic. So you need that, right? Using reclaimed water for residential homes will never pay for itself.
No, no, I meant industrial. If you get it to Johns Prairie somehow, I don't know how you get there, but.
I don't, we'll look into our tanks if they're going offline for their best uses. But that particular one, one is location and two is age. It's, you start, reclaimed water is a little bit more corrosive because you have to keep a higher chlorine residual in it also.
Deteriorate quicker?
Deteriorated.
Just out of curiosity, it doesn't really matter. When was the last time it was painted?
Yeah, I can look that up. It's.
Yeah, it was the nineties.
Okay.
It's about twenty, twenty-five years ago it was painted.
Did we paint a tank years ago? It's about three hundred thousand bucks to paint it? Didn't we paint one? Or we talked about painting one?
That, that's what this is just for prepping.
Yeah, yeah.
The last one to be painted was, was that up for Mountain View?
I thought we'd painted.
Mountain View was pre-painted.
Oh, no, the, the one upon Peacock, that's my last one's a maintenance project that I remember.
See, I remember that interior coating has to meet drinking water standards. So it's not off-the-shelf paint, right? It's really expensive stuff.
Yeah, we did capital goals.
I have a quick question. Um, I've got a question about us. You said well three, the, um, was in twenty sixteen? And well one, that's in eighty-nine. So how long before we had reclaimed sixteen, how old is that one? Were they comparable in age? Or do we know? I'm just curious.
From how old were the water places in sixteen?
Yeah, yeah.
I can look that up for you.
Like, were they, is there a big age gap in them or were they?
Yeah, because they, they weren't all installed at the same time. So it's usually, you don't want to go too much over twenty years on them.
Okay.
You need to inspect every few years. But, and then well one, prior to the project, discharged into the gravity line. So it was girdling out and not having fluid back pressure, right? So it had a good life. It didn't have to pump up a line, right? Well three did build, right? And so they didn't want more wear and tear when they had the pressure up, you know, the ADPSI or whatever.
But well one got rebuilt in the last several years. So I thought we'd pulled it and rebuilt it.
Recently?
Yeah, well four was this year or last year.
Well four was inspected.
Yeah, but I thought well one, we pulled the motor out and had it rebuilt or something two years ago.
We have rebuilt. We've sent the motors out.
Yeah, I thought well one, we did that. It was offline for a while.
Yes.
Yeah.
If you drain that tank, how long does it stay drained for, for the project?
They didn't drain it for the project. They might have.
She's saying, when you, if you coat it.
Right, yeah.
You want to do it, well, that's a problem. You do it during the summer when it's dry out and nice sunny weather, but that's when we need the reservoir, right? So we're going to have to pick a spring or a fall and keep your fingers crossed for weather. So it's going to be an interesting project.
Yeah, I was kind of wondering.
We can't take it down during the summer. We don't have any really redundant capacity in our system yet.
How long would it be down though?
Uh, something like that, probably three to four weeks.
Okay.
And with, we do have the ability to give water to the downtown zones in other ways, but it's just not, we're not really redundant on the amount of supply or the storage that we have.
Okay. So you're hoping when it happens, we don't take it higher or something. Got it.
Well, we're protected on that through our transition.
Okay.
So the generator, this is a generator for well one. We're putting all this infrastructure in. We want it to be redundant. We're going to have, we're starting with well one because well three and four have a generator on site. We do have a portable one for a booster pump station, but we can, with bringing things up to standard at well one, we're going to install a generator there also.
And the generator three at four is next. It can only run three or four, not both simultaneously in the knowledge. And the generator's twenty-plus years old, and you have to manually turn it on. You can't do it remotely. It doesn't auto sense correctly. It's older technology. And so we wanted to bring these generators up to current standards. And that's just for extended power outage, right? The power seems pretty reliable here in this community. I mean, how long have you been out of power? Have you been out for days at times or?
Not in the city.
Eight hours. My entire life is along with this.
Now, if you're in Steepwood Island, they've been out of power for weeks out there.
Yeah, I know. We've been really lucky in town.
But in a larger event, that could be a fire, earthquake, large storm, winter storm, a lot of rashes and that sort of thing, we're going to need these generators sitting there ready to mount.
We have a generator study going on right now for the remaining sites on sizing and transfer switches.
Do we still have a lot, we still have a lot of gravity lines down the road for, for when, well, I heard myself. Those new speakers. Oh, oh, that's what I heard. Well, I heard myself. Whoa. Like, for like, if there was an earthquake and there was no power, generators aren't working or out of fuel. Do we still have gravity water?
Yeah, the reservoir and transmission lines will still go for an extended period of time. If there's a large fire flow, we're going to drain the reservoirs quickly, right? And then the emergency operations center will have to make decisions at that point about how long they think, can we put out the fires? Or should we hold the water for drinking? Evacuate people and let the fires burn? There's a lot of decisions that need to happen. Hopefully that day never comes.
The pressure lines are primarily for supply from the pump to the, to the, from the well to the reservoir.
Okay, so not to the house.
And then, then most of the system is, is gravity from here and correct. So it's getting those reservoirs built again. And that's why the generator's got to play is getting the water to the reservoir so you can feed the rest of the community through the gravity lines.
That's managed in advance, you know, eventually you run out of gas or diesel or whatever.
All our wells do about a thousand gallons per minute. So if all three of them are running, technically, we can put three thousand gallons in the system. That's a flow of a large fire. So we should be able to keep up. But if they're out, you know, if we don't have electricity, we still need to pump water into the system to keep up.
So this is for well one? You said that we have older ones for three and four already?
We have one generator that runs one.
One with the other, okay. And then eventually we're going to update that, correct?
Yes.
What do we do?
You could see generators for the next few months.
Right. And I'm good with that. But the old ones, if they're still working, do we use them as a backup? Do we use them somewhere else?
You could, but because of the age, parts are harder to come by. And I, or else we would update the circuit boards and that sort of thing. And then, so we ran into end-of-life issues.
Okay.
Most likely surplus. I know it's more every avenue to use it in another facility if that's appropriate. But at the end of the day, it'll, it'll be surplus or reused. We, if we have that redundancy and it's covered, we're fine with that. We also have, as you know, we talked about storage issues, particularly dry storage issues. So it's not prudent to leave something sitting around in the weather in case we need it because it further deteriorates. And then when we go to start it, it doesn't work and it won't happen and we don't have water. So.
Yeah, currently we do have one trailer-mounted standby generator that you can tow around. And that's part of the study that we're doing, making sure we have all the proper transfer switches and connections in so we can run multiple things with portable generators.
What's our, what's the city's supply of strategic diesel?
We have an emergency cube down on the trailer at the shop and as well as a thousand gallon diesel, two thousand gallons diesel changed out of the shop.
It looks small when you drive up to it, but it's two thousand gallons.
I remember not that many years ago, I was sitting back here, we ran out of fuel in a big snow event. And their staff was driving all over the place trying to find how they get fuel.
We, we changed that policy so the tanks could pop off every week now. So we're full every week.
Oh, got it. Live and learn, huh?
These generators are more efficient than what we've had in stock.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, the new generators are much more fuel efficient.
And we do have some in our local agreements where we can go out to the county. We've gone out to fuel providers. That's a core of small and size. And I think that's where we ended up when we were out last time.
I sold you some too. There's, well, I was, the thing, I think the problem was, was there was nobody had credit cards or something, I think, was, was the problem back then.
It's been that.
Yeah, that's been a two years, yeah. But it was a lot of snow, though. It was like a solid week of snow, I think, about five years ago, four years ago.
So this is a super project. It's a pipe removal that goes underneath Goldsboro Creek. If you stand on the bridge, you can actually look and see the pipeline going there. And this has been kind of a long time coming and getting budgeted for. We've, the last couple of years, we've been doing a study on how to get it out in alternatives because right now it acts as our, if Neyland Park pump station goes down, we can send everything to the Front Street pump station. And it actually works the other way. The Front Street pump station goes down, it can backfeed into Neyland. So we've been particular with the design of this. And a lot of cities don't have that redundancy, right? If a pump station goes down, it overflows. They have to bring in portable pumps and figure out how to get through that situation. But this is, this was kind of mandated from when we put in that pipe bridge to get our permitting through there. But they were saying, okay, well, you put this in, like, you need to take this pipe out. So we've been working with, this project's got delayed quite a bit because they were doing some estuary work out over the day. They wanted to get that done before we started doing this work. Worked with the tribe fishing wildlife. They wanted out. And it's not just a pipe removal. It's the pipe removal designed for a future bypass, how we're going to get that connected back from Neyland to Front Street pump stations and have that redundancy. And then also removing those giant rocks that were put in. So those rocks were put in so it wouldn't downcut and wash our pipe out. So.
So downcutting will continue once the rocks are removed and go along under the bridge, the Highway three bridge. So we've contacted men on site, washed out of bridge people, and they're okay with a bunch of sediment coming out through there. So we're looking to balance the string back out. And, because right now those rocks are artificially holding a bunch of sediment back.
Yeah, it's, it's really high on fishing wildlife in the tribes that's because Goldsboro has estuary control around it. It's one of the highest-producing streams right now in this area. So.
I mean, how are you going to get hooked back up to Front Street then?
We're going to have to put in some wet wells and just probably have to hook in some bypassing piping. So whether we hang it on our pipe bridge or to pipe it around, because there's manholes on either side that we would have to design and tie it into. So it's going to be a step project. Get the design for those, get the, for the bypass, take the pipe out, take the rocks out, and then we'll fund those projects to give the bypass in. We do have the ability to, with the design of this, when they redid Front Street pump station, they set out a temporary bypass out in the front of it. It was secured off and tapped right into the force main. We do have the ability to do some temporary bypassing right on Neyland's site. So we have the ability to kind of get through it, but it's going to be a big design project coming up. So this is the force main that went across the bridge in the last picture. It goes from Front Street pump station, goes over Goldsboro and Neyland pump station, ties into it, goes all the way down the road of trash and feeds the main waste by our chicken plant. The last time the conditions were, the condition of that force main was looked at was during the upgrades to the main white wastewater chicken plant. There were some airbags installed on it and some monitoring equipments. We could tell what the pressure is in that line. But that was going on twelve years ago now. So we're going to get somebody in and look at the, because there is no backup. We, we have some pipe down at the plant that we have. So if something, if somebody poured into it or broke it, we could do a section of pipe. But we just want to make sure that that's in shape.
How old was that pipe?
It is from the original plant. So that's, it's from the seventies. All right. The paving projects, we have lumped together the in-house paving that we do with Mason County. I think next study session, we're going to bring forward the new PCI ratings that we have. We're budgeting a hundred fifty thousand towards those projects. We haven't picked locations. That's something we'll break to you, good ideas on what you want to see done with that location-wise. And that's that TBD fund that we use to do that. So it'll be on the project list. Same with the Mason County chip seal, that one. It's kind of a rollover from, we didn't have time to get to that this year with the county. So we, we're doing a little bit of prep work with some of that money this year, but then we're going to roll that hundred thousand that we budgeted for this year into next year's. And we're working, we've been working in the area from Seven Street that goes into Upgrating Park through Wind Dock in that area. Found some. Found some roads that a chip seal will really extend the life of them rather than full overlay. Uh, downtown street repair, just saw a little bit of this in, um, that REIT presentation that Mike gave. This is more, um, areas downtown, the concrete, uh, panels, uh, some of the intersections that have been brought up by council in the past, that we'd like to see some funding going into infrastructure downtown. Fourth and Cedar was one of the big areas that intersection's kind of blown up. And we can tie into some of the even work that was done when they put in the courthouse and, uh, match that. And then also we'll come through council too and say, hey, is there any particular, um, locations that you'd like to see? The yearly, uh, pavement and preservation, that's sewer and storm. When we do these paving projects, we need to go in and make sure the infrastructure underneath them is in sound condition and then replace it if we need to at that time. So we're not putting it on the back. Uh, storm is really high because we're talking about getting K Street, get that done ahead of the Olympic Highway North project, do some work up there to get that infrastructure in better shape for when we come in and do that grain and delay. And that's one of the requirements that when we do big projects like that, that the infrastructure underneath is, the T I B wants that sound.
No, it makes, it makes sense. Let's not, let's not, uh, put new road down and then a year after go get, cut it open to fix a pipe. So, I mean, same thing, I know that we contact even third party people like Cascadian Gas and say, hey, we're gonna do a road. You wanna do anything, you better do it now or it's gonna be five years before we let you do it, so.
Yeah, we'll get.
It's a good policy.
This year we're, um, knocking some of the gravel roads that have been maintenance issues for a long time over the Poplar and First Street up on Capitol Hill. So those will end up nice when we, uh, we're scheduled within a couple of weeks to start paving on that. The crews have been out doing the prep work. And with that, we're putting in storm infrastructure on that. So we're meeting all of our D O E requirements that we're putting this in pretty surface. It's a little bit different than just doing it all the way.
Phase two.
Look, Highway North, so, um, this is, um, it's a big number. Most of it is making the, um, grant that we received real. We've already budgeted, uh, close to five hundred thousand dollars of TBD match money towards that project. Realistically, we're making the money real, but most of it is, next year is going to be design work. So reality is probably next, uh, twenty-six is when that's gonna be installed.
Yeah, so the tenant date is November, beginning November of next year. Uh, there's a lot of design that's set up of that project surveying, that sort of thing.
Yep, surveying, signal. We're looking into seeing if we can get the K Street signal upgraded. Just exactly how, and that's adding in a bike lane and some other, um, contributes to that.
We had to get the grant, we had this all bike lanes. That was one of the, uh, grant requirements. So you see some of the on-street parking stalls there? They're going to be taken away and those will turn into bike lanes.
Yeah, and with this, um, it's tied into the systemic pedestrian safety improvements. So that project, we have an I Street. You'll see a budget request of that. We're just, um, we budgeted originally and got more grant money than we budgeted before. So we have to, um, allocate another hundred fifty-four thousand to that project. So you'll see a budget, um, request for that. That's just grant money that we received.
So the last thing, these are all federal funds. This state fund is federal funds. This systemic pedestrian improvements is federal funds or federalized state funds. But anyways, with Olympic Highway North, we're doing the systemic project. So that was the Shell Outfitters location is happening. I Street is happening. A signal evaluation is Seventh Street. And then at Third and Railroad, uh, some rapid flashing beacons are all, that's the reason why it's taken a while to design it because there's, with this project comes other locations, certain of them being designed?
Yeah, they're all getting designed together. The science improvement plan is, um, now that we have G I S and E A M running these systems, we're gonna go in and start doing, we've kind of been waiting for those programs to get initiated. We're gonna go and sign inventory, our signs. We have an inventory, but we're needing to update it. And then, um, just sign bigger dedication over years. We need to put in some new, uh, signs that meet retroreflectivity and the current standards.
Which is a liability issue, you would say. We need to maintain those to meet standards or potential liability. There's, there's an accident or anything.
We're also getting out a, a wood post business and going, you can see that sign there appears to be a metal post. Uh, we're going to all, uh, metal post bases over time?
Uh, guardrail replacement, we have guardrails on San Joaquin Avenue and Highland Drive. We've gone through, painted them, uh, pressure washed them, but we're, we've got, but we're planning to replace them with improved, uh, bases and mounting. So we're gonna go through and get those out. Those are really our only, um, two guardrail areas that we have, so.
Again, those can be a liability issue in the city. If you've seen the highways where they have the crumple zones kind of on the end, they, they curl up away from the vehicles rather than go through the vehicles unfortunately. These are, this is quite old infrastructure that needs to be current safety standards.
That was gonna be my question, how old are they? They're that old, we don't know. Yeah, you can almost tell by looking at them, yeah.
So falls in Neyland intersection improvement. We have, uh, some conceptual drawings. Uh, we have the six hundred fifty thousand, um, dollars in a grant. And then we received another million dollar grant. We see the five fifty because we already budgeted a hundred thousand in that area. So that's just to make it all of your grant money real. And then we need to really look at that intersection to see how we're moving forward. What's actually going in there, the best thing for it, whether it's separated signals. We are, uh, going to, uh, we're able to use about twenty thousand dollars and upgrade the signals the way they are right now. Uh, putting in some left, or left turn permissive. That's a, something we're gonna do this year, but this is just getting this money allocated. So we figure out the future projects so we can go and ask for grant funding with a designed project on the shelf and say, hey, once we get this money, we can put it in.
So right now, there's a lot of left turn backups there, uh, when the schools are letting out. And so, uh, in the next probably three months, we hope to have left turn signal heads up that, uh, will be the flashing yellow arrow that'll let you go when there's a gap or whatever. And then the sensor, if it recognizes cars are queued up, they're still sitting there, it will give you a green cycle, uh, you know, turn red through, through lanes to allow you a free green movement also, which will be a big upgrade to buy us some time here until we can, uh, figure out, it's likely we're going to a roundabout there uh, because we've got some okay funding to get going on it. Um, we're just gonna need somewhere in the four million dollar range for that roundabout right there. And, um, we're, you know, about one point six right now, so we've got a ways to go. But we'd like to get some plans perhaps designed for that for the roundabout and be shovel ready, you know, and, uh, and then see grant opportunities with the construction of that.
That, that turn signal's gonna help a lot there, I think. I mean, that's basically a red light, left turn, one, one, maybe two cars. And they're both running red lights, by the way, to, to get through that during peak hours.
There'll certainly be a safety enhancement.
I think it'll be huge. I think it'll be huge.
It's good that we have some infrastructure in place that can be altered to, to meet those needs.
We were lucky the wires were there in the boxes at the bottom of the poles. Uh, and we didn't have to go and do a significant amount of work there. Um, our staff will be self-performing that using our bucket truck and all that. And then we're bringing in a control cabinet expert. He has to put some new controller parts and that sort of thing in there and get the timing set up and all that.
That's great, I think that's gonna be a big help.
And stormwater comp plan, uh, this is one of our requirements, um, for our new permit. We're, we're not considered a new permitting anymore. We have, uh, been under the permit coverage long enough. And so you won't see a lot of storm projects on the capital, um, six-year list because with this is what we're gonna develop, those projects that we're targeting through this study. The last one that we have is oh seven. So it's far beyond time to get the new one rolling in with that. Take the capital projects list that was and strike the projects that have been done on it and then see with the new permit if those are really the priority projects still or which projects will be the target.
This is for existing infrastructure. Basically, all new development now has to follow, uh, phase two, uh, requirements that we have.
Yeah.
There's, there's regional projects that could be included in this. What would we do in downtown? You know, there's, there's limited infrastructure downtown, limited opportunities to add a regional facility. How do we, how do we best approach that? These requirements, we have high groundwater, a lot of urban basements at the same time. So it'll be, it'll be unique. We have some drainages in downtown that have been altered and that are being utilized for conveyance of stormwater, uh, right now. How do you best treat those, filter those, mitigate, you know, act those facilities and all of them?
And the maintenance, they've been on the yard. This is a sketch of the proposed location. And, uh, I think everyone's fully aware, we lack storage at our current facility for equipment. And, um, with a growing city, uh, we have split crews. Some are down at wastewater treatment plant, some are down at the main shop. We store equipment in both locations. This will be a centralized location for us. And plus it'll free up some of that shop area to where we can utilize it for other city needs. Police, evidence, storage, um, things of that. And with this, we're looking into tying this new facility into our emergency management center. So it's up on the hill, it's by our wells, so it's next to some critical infrastructure that we can, um, get to. And maybe at the toe of the slope right now, I'm not saying that everything would be wiped out, but probably not gonna be standing, uh, whether that, um, hill slides out or not. Old buildings, um, we would be keeping that, um, lot down there, uh, portion of it because we do have our lower Hingle Side Booster Pump Stations, some water infrastructure. And then utilizing this for our main.
So the current location of this is where?
Uh, right next to well one off, um, Shelton Springs Road and Thirteenth, um, going clear up to Wallace-Neyland. We own all that, uh, property under the power lines, it can't be really developed.
Behind Coyote, behind the.
Across, across Spring Road.
Cross, not far than ninety acres at.
No.
Closer to the hospital.
Okay.
Borders, um, the.
Essentially, yeah, east of the.
The schools.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, the, if you look at the picture, the top left-hand corner is the P C P A power line corridor. Or the list that just came through, power line, P C P A power line corridor.
I can't see it.
There was parallel walls, we will, are crossing south of Wayne City.
We can utilize that for our A N area that can be used for, for tap and shelves.
Right.
And then, like we talked about, fueling station, we'll have another fueling station. This will be set more ways out so it's not E R and R site. That'll give us some redundancy in the fuel system too.
This is proactive planning we've talked about, not only time to time again, it's not only these, um, our current needs, but also future needs in the community. We all plan on this now, we, you know, the gun.
I think we're overdue already.
What we would, you know, be remiss in saying is that it needs to be funded somehow. There's a lot of uses between sewer utility, water utility, stormwater utility parks, uh, E R and R, facilities that are housed here, so it should be spread around and how that's funded and determined. Just left to work out a little bit. But we need to get this on our E R and plan according. We, um, we hope there could be some risk management, FEMA money available out there too, to meet some of the costs to, uh, constructive facilities such as this. But we certainly need to get the plan fully in place so we know what end result rules like. And then we can put it on accord on the, uh, we can report it. Ninety-nine point nine percent sure it's gonna be a phased project in some, in some manner.
If, if we can locate some funding elsewhere or really low interest loan or that sort of thing. It's projected to be an eight million dollar project right now. The good news is, is with this budget, uh, request here, we'll have two million already saved up for it. So we're a quarter of the way there, which is really good news. Be able to stay optimistic side. Uh, if we can find a grant for a good part of it and then a low interest loan against multiple utility funds and that sort of thing, so the cost is really shared and it wouldn't be very painful with just water or sewer. That'd be something I'd be bringing you guys to consider.
Cool. Mark, could you or Mike just give the two second explanation? Because we were talking about a tight general fund budget, now we're talking about stuff that come out of enterprise funds. Can you give the two-minute speech on the different funds?
Well, we've talked a lot about utility funds, right? So you have water, sewer, storm. Uh, street is a separate fund, but it's not a utility. So utility funds have to be self-supported, so they're, they're rate supported by the rate pair. So, uh, again, those are generated through water consumption, water usage, G F Cs. G F Cs are used for infrastructure capacity improvements.
Yep.
Um, if a new house is built today, they pay for that G F C, a general facility charge to hook up to water and sewer. That money is spent for capacity down the road. So it's larger pipes, pipes that go to another, you know, area of the community. Same for streets and traffic impact, you build a house. So those stay within those funds or only spent within those funds. The most recent rate study produced by, um, F C S group, um, with rates that were adopted, these were sewer water last year, um, for a three-year cycle, contemplated our capital improvement program as well as maintenance operations. So they took the entirety of what it takes us to maintain and operate our infrastructure today and what that looks like in the next three years, combined with the capital improvement program to develop a rating based on water.
That's exactly what I wanted you to tell the public.
Yeah.
Is basically our general fund is, is our general fund. And then we have these water funds, sewer funds, stormwater fund. And, and they're, and they're all operated by the G F Cs.
I don't want to plant any seeds. The, 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 the general fund could support the utilities. That is legal under state law. Obviously, they're not as robust as the utilities. You could get a loan from one fund to another, but you have to pay that back and pay that back in interest as well. Maybe from the utility to a utility or general fund to a utility at the same time. Again, um, we, that F C S analysis and our own capital improvement program has listed a robust, um, need, needs list to meet current infrastructure needs and future infrastructure needs. So at this point, you know, the funds are adequate to fund the projects. Other than, uh, the, this isn't fully included, it's full build out. And then the water, um, the water rates were contemplated alone to finish some of our reservoir needs at the same time, which we haven't brought to council yet because we don't have that reservoir study and path forward for that. Boy, now we have them in the next several months, right?
We have a draft of it right now that we're reviewing, gonna get back to it because it's so, so probably in the next six weeks.
Yeah, that's the million gallon tank, million and a half gallon tank.
Yeah, somewhere in that range.
Size, location.
Yeah, they're, they're telling us essentially, I don't want to spoil all the fun. So it's the best location to serve the entirety of the city, the size of that infrastructure. They have a kind of matrix set up that, your drugs are common, such as you want, that tells us, you know, what might be the best location. How it, how it best serves the community. Obviously, there's, you know, there's some locations better than others, but there's maybe some issues with conveyance in those locations. So if, you know, you don't have the perfect spot, where you have the right elevation, right conveyance, the right feed, I guess, from, from the supply at the same time. So you just have to weigh those and find what suits the community best for, for the long term.
Yeah, and these projects that we brought forward to, we've worked with Mike, Dawn, Jay, Colin. So what we're presenting is the utility funds at a balanced budget, meeting reserves, assuming the rates for next year. That's what we're working off. So we can, we're not having to borrow it to the reserves. This is with a balanced budget.
Great point, Brett. We have a secure reserves in our utilities at the same time for emergencies, just like the general fund that we've talked about. So, you know, pretty sure that the council taking that action, however you're supposed to, is that, because it gives staff that guideline and that metric where to start. And make sure that we have the ability to address those, those emergencies down the road that maybe some of the communities wouldn't have the ability to.
Yeah, we have the, a few accounts have two reserves, our operating reserves and then the requirements that we have for our home payments that we have to pull back also. So you might see, so you might see a big ending fund balance, but it has, most of these fund balances are spent down because we know where our revenues are in those. But we know some of it you can't touch. It has to be reserved for home payments and our reserves.
Great explanation. I just wanted the people to know that with our $15 million budget, this is totally separate. And it's funded separately and by rates and everything else. You know, we, we didn't talk about, you know, our sewer treatment plant, you know, being, where does that come into play here in the next several years? Being that it's now 14 or 15 years old and starting to get a little bit dated itself. You got any plans for that in the next?
So, so this is the capital improvement projects. In the budget, you, you will see some, we do have somebody allocated for pump replacements, mixers, motors. But we have some allocated that just. We, we budgeted a number at it, but it's more saying, okay, if this fails, we use it. And if we need a new pump, we can pull out of that rather than, and not budget anything for it.
So you don't see any need for a capital improvement on this?
Our sewer comprehensive plan doesn't outline the replacement of that, that plant. It, it outlines that a northern diversion project, I think that would.
And, and capacity upgrades to the plant, which the headworks project, which without a grant for is under, under design. So that's the top end of the membrane plant. The filters we did, what, two and a half years ago now? We put all new membrane filters in there. So Brent's doing a real good job on O and M. But the headworks part of it, which is the front side, we'll take care of that. And then the sewer capital improvement plan has an ongoing list of projects in there for mainly capacity upgrades. The plant right now does about 400,000 gallons a day maxed out. Right now, your inflows are, what are about $220,000. And most of that's from the prison. And so anyways.
I think you're referencing the main plant.
Yeah.
So we have a list of capital projects for the next six years too, that I think we're going to include in the budget packet. So you'll see those updated projects, the cost that we see coming forward with those. Because there are some big projects on that six-year highway. But we're trying to tackle those. And those are part of the comp plan. So that's what the rates were based on, the GFCs were set on. And we'll knock those projects out as we go. We are trying to get more in designing these projects ahead of time. So we have them on the shelves at least designed. We've got some good grant funding for design for some projects. So then when we do make grant funds, we're not designing and building and getting that fund or the grant money getting old. So we can just go straight into some projects.
We definitely know that shovel-ready projects are popular with the state if they're ready.
To answer your question a little bit more, I, I think the intent on the main plant is to divert flow from there as opposed to expanding that plant in the future and getting.
Well, that's, that's kind of why I was talking to that.
Getting to the membrane plant and getting it deferred up there to create more reclaimed water. It alleviates the need for generating more capacity down that main plant. And it alleviates the discharge company, which I think is, you know, ultimately a.
The goal is to eliminate all the surface of the bay. Likely you'd put in a membrane type of facility somewhere at the main plant or some other place. The two pumps that Neeland and Front's pump stations don't go all the way out there anymore. Goes maybe to a new site 20 years from now.
So we're still not.
And that reclaimed water goes back up into the Goldsboro or Mill Creek water stands to recharge her fish.
So we're still not looking at injection wells or spray fields anymore in the future? That was kind of a dream when I first started here, that we were talking about that a lot.
For, up the E R plant, because we can augment Goldsboro Creek's treatment flows. So that's where we're building this big tank to get more flow in there and more reclaimed water. So that's going to be avenue we can divert more up there, less going out in the bay. And then to big tail on just diverting flows there cuts down on, so you can just maintain the treatment plant. You don't have to do major upgrades to the main plant. And then that's where the I and I projects come in. Because we still, we're, we're knocking these basins out. But there's some smoke testing projects that we can do to try and take out rough drains that are connected in because our, our flow's still increasing a lot. But so for capacity projects, it's more diverting flows to the membrane plant and then doing I and I projects. The inflow infiltration into our system. Because like right now, summer flows are only billion gallons at that treatment plant. They get up to 4 billion gallons a month or a day on the winter months.
That was a, that was a question I.
I and I projects, I and I projects cut down. They're basically capacity projects because you free up what you're treating down there.
You probably don't know, I don't know if you know yet. How, how was the, the flow on that heavy, heavy, crazy hail rain day?
So that really didn't affect, it, it has to be saturated in down in the ground where the pipes are. So it didn't.
Okay. I thought maybe.
If you have those rates in the middle of winter, when the ground's already saturated, that's when the treatment plant really gets high flows.
I would have thought you would have saw some, some extended flows because that was crazy.
But the, the infiltration or deep well injections certainly are a future, you know, a future project or consideration of.
Yeah, they're in the comp plan to replace existing spray field with an injection system or infiltration gallery. Because right now, a spray field sprays out of the air. It hits so, we get a lot of evaporation there too. So if we can take it directly to the ground, you know, it's more efficient. It takes what, four to six months for the well, the infiltration or the spray field right now for that water to travel to Goldsboro Creek. And we can increase the amount of water just by going to an injection well significantly and through just the evaporation loss. So that's a project in the comp plan. That's really grant eligible too.
Feel like I'm talking too much, but really quick question. You talked about the membranes. You said there was an upgraded membrane a while back and we were looking at, are we still looking at those upgrades or? And how, do you want to see how they were working out elsewhere?
So the Kubota filters were replaced with in-kind Kubota filters. What, they were 12 years old, Brent, 10 years old?
Yeah, eight, they had a really good lifespan.
They're starting to tear, but we're starting to have some clogging problems and that sort of thing. So we have brand-new Kubota filters in there. Got about eight years left on them. In the next replacement cycle, they have higher capacity ones. Technologies obviously change. And at the time that we replaced them a few years ago, it was still a cutting edge, but they're really starting to improve themselves.
That was the ceramic ones we replaced. We put ceramic ones in, yes.
I know council members staff hasn't visited treatment plants yet. Is there any council members that have not visited treatment plants and want to?
I'll go.
Terrific, okay. We'll work on scheduling that again because it's an interesting, interesting environment and process that is better understood when you're outside. Rather than sitting, sitting here.
You're going to drink the water for us?
I'll bring, I'll bring some in a bottle that I guarantee it came out of.
I gotta say, Mike McCarty drank three levels of water, remember? Was it three or four? I mean, they went from, went from brown down, down to clear, but he drank them, shows that they were safe. And we're all like, yeah, we're not going to do that.
But I mean, the sewer fill is high. We all understand that. And it's because we're operating two wastewater treatment plants and we have a lot of operations, maintenance, capital projects and that sort of thing. With a goal of adding more users, right? To help to offset some of the bills with more users, we can spread out the costs, right? Because we do have capacity at both plants, which is good news. And we have some, a little bit of capacity in our water system. We're still working on that, trying to get rid of some dead storage. And the reservoir options study will help you guys understand that a lot more.
I'm not talking anymore. Anybody else have anything?
I'm excited for your lay-down plan. I hope to see that in my lifetime. I want to see it done, complete. I think it's really important for emergency management for you guys to be up on the hill, not at the bottom of the hill.
We have a whole big project.
Okay, we are at the end. Does council have any new items for discussion? All right, then this study session is adjourned at 7:40 PM.
Recording stopped.